Call this, uh, Village of Green Hills Council Meeting, Work Session for June the 10th, 2014 to order. Clerk called, roll.
Row call, here.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
Hermes.
Stand here.
Lee. Walter.
Here.
Moore.
Here. Okay. We can have a work session and, uh, first thing on the agenda is Mr. Holder's committee, maybe develop it.
Committee blocked grant. And my understanding of the...
Sure. This, um, this resolution is the first step in every three years we go through this process. Um, how to put this on a three-year cycle and the resolution, um, that's for discussion tonight would be on your agenda next time would be, is the first step which, uh, you simply saw you're going to participate in the program. Um, the following step to this is where we would develop actual project ideas to submit to the county that usually occurs around... We don't have that paperwork yet, but this was the, uh, this is the first step and it's due to the county by June or early.
Previous to this, I guess, the previous year we did fifteen thousand dollars a year to give out to people. Um, right now, I guess, in the first three years of talking to Yvonne, uh, we owe, we gave forty, well, it's forty-five thousand?
Total forty-five thousand.
And we gave about eighteen. So it was a suggestion by Jeff Alter to make it two thousand dollars, um, so it could actually be more as far as giving something more to the people if they want to go and update something.
It would help us spend money a little quicker.
Right. And I, and you're, we're thinking that could be, uh, that's going to work out with the county, right?
Oh, right. We can do that. We have to amend our, um, current guidelines for the program, but that is something I can add in the council meeting if you're interested in doing that.
Yeah, 'cause I think giving more back to the people, putting the money into an investment, especially since nobody's really taken that much advantage of it, I think it might be nicer, people probably jump on that more.
It doesn't take much to get up to two grand. Depending on what you're doing.
Are there certain income restrictions on receiving?
Yes.
It's quite an extensive process, actually, application process to get through, but, um, yes, there are many guidelines.
I mean, no matter what, you'll have to pay out something yourself.
Sure.
They'll give you a pretty, and the most was a thousand before. It'd be nicer if you made it two, if somebody wants to replace windows and something like a little nice discount.
A thousand bucks doesn't go away very far.
That's money from our current three-year cycle, so that would help us to spend that money. Why was it?
In, um, the concern about, um, inviting certain, you know, the issue of like, are we opening the door or fostering low-concern development? I don't know how else to say it.
Like the wrong things?
Right.
No, actually, people used it very wisely, I think, to, a lot of people have, um, like, done gutters and windows and doors, things that are enhancing their property and...
So far, so good.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause I think they really, they want to see what you're going to use it for, and they make sure that you actually perform that work.
Correct. And it's gone very well, it's just we do have money remaining and it would be nice to use that. Um, if, if that's successful, we could also continue, uh, and I'm trying to come up with some more creative uses for the money going forward into the three years and waiting for some responses from the county, but, um, be thinking if there were projects that you were going to try to get funding.
Okay. What do you guys think about the two thousand as opposed to the one? Anybody?
Yeah. I'm supportive of that.
One thousand goes away pretty fast.
What about...
Depending on what you have to do, and right now it doesn't take that much to, to use one thousand.
Right. What about public awareness and is...
I mean, there are structures.
Is there other ways for us to make people aware?
Anything you tried to fix now is two thousand.
Right. I, I just wondered if they, I wondered if the use in it was that some people weren't getting, kind of, weren't aware of it. Is it in the journal?
Yes.
Would it change, have to be notified in the journal, though? The change that...
We'll do that. Right, council does that, I think. That'd be smart, do that, try to, try to get word out, get it to spend.
So what, would we be able to amend that? I guess that's for, for starting in 2015 or...
No, no, you can send that right away. You aren't, I'll have to get, revise the guidelines, bring them to you at your next council meeting, and you'll have to pass those.
Cool. Sound like good idea?
Okay. Okay, we'll do that.
Anything else?
Well, just, um, I know that last work-in session we talked about the prayer and, I think it was just a small one, but it wasn't on, on the agenda. What were you saying concerning this?
Uh, I, well, you're finished with the committee on block grant?
Right, before I, this kind of something in the...
Well, we finished. I thought we were going to have Jack's, have Jack's committee review it, but then had we decided to...
Well, it was my understanding that we were going to talk about it at the work session. I thought that's how we...
It was my understanding too, because there were two members absent, and that's what the understanding that I had, the two members that were absent did not take part.
Actually, and I actually think it would be, um, it's okay to discuss it in, in the committee. I almost feel like I already know what Jack thinks and what Maria thinks on the topic, and I just thought it'd be good to have a broader discussion. Um, and I, and the more I thought about it, I, I don't think it'll even be lengthy discussion in general, because really what we have the opportunity to do is to reinstate prayer into, if we so choose, um, and, you know, that can be presented at the council meeting and then you can just break it to a vote, yeah?
No, we can't. We can't change the rules of council on my vote. There has to be public, there is a, a time period for changing the rules of council.
I have two things to say about that. I would like to invoke the Rule 39 on how to amend the rules of council, um, and it says in here that providing, uh, the intended amendment shall have been given on the floor of council, um, at the previous meeting. So I would like to use this time now to say that I would like to bring up a motion on the next council meeting, uh, for the adoption of the amendment of that. Having said that, I also have here to...
What's the amendment?
To insert the word prayer back into the rules of council.
I'm not sure we can do that with it not being on the agenda and this is a work session.
Well, I asked it to be, I'll put on the agenda. I, I sent the topics that I wanted to be discussed in here and it was not put in, and I did my part of it. Uh, also, on the other part that I would like to share with you, this is the first prayer delivered in the Continental Congress by Reverend Jac- Jacob Duchesne on September the seventh, seventeen seventy-four, the one that, uh, Justice Kennedy delivered and rendered the decision of five to four, and I just want whoever wants to have a copy of that can have that.
Okay, and as far as process goes, can I...
Yeah, I don't want to, I mean, my understanding was it was in Jack's committee for him, for his committee to study and make a recommendation back to us and then we would deliver that. And if, if we want to do something different, if that's a pleasure of council or, or whatever, then that's fine.
All right, on this one, I'm almost, I would bank on it that, um, we said that we would discuss it next work session. And I also sent it in as a request.
And I apologize, since this went to me, my recollection was I didn't go into committee and that's why it responded the way that it did, so.
Kathy, do you have any information on the findings?
The information that I have is from the May thirteenth council work session, and if I, let me read this. Uh, Mr. Breeze stated recently, "The Supreme Court has upheld prayer at council meeting. He wants council's actions to be consistent with the rules of council as enacted or amended." Mr. Breeze emphasized, "Council's, uh, council's opinion to pray was never taken away. This matter was then referred to the laws and rules committee for further discussion at the June thirteenth, two thousand fourteen meeting." That's what the...
Well, my recollection was that the two members were absent. Uh, in fact, I think it was the mayor who said that they deserve to be part of the discussion and that we were going to bring it back to the next work session, and that's why I added that as part of the agenda. I wanted to be that part of the agenda.
Okay, and I have a question, uh, as it relates to changing the rules of council. Does it have to be a moment, a motion brought up in a regular council meeting before it's active on the next council meeting? Because that's how, I think we did it at the end of the year. We did it at the first of the year because that's the first thing you have to do when this new council is passed rules of council, so you can, for ever, was the operator. But would you have to bring it up? I had brought it up multiple times through the fall, and the reason that I brought it up was there was a pending Supreme Court case. I did not want us to be a poster child for the ACL YouTube or any other group to say, "Here's a community that has it in and we're, we'll have them." Um, it was not consistent with how we had behaved for the prior eight years. Um, and, um, I didn't, I wanted the rules of council to be applicable to all council members, and if nobody felt comfortable leading us in prayer, I didn't want to force a member of council to lead public prayer. And there was nothing that, in that change, that prohibited prayer from happening. It just said that it wasn't part of our regular agenda like the pledge of allegiance was. And we inserted a moment of silence.
But if that moment of silence obviously is the same thing.
That, okay, that's fine, yeah. That's, if we want to have discussion about that, that's fine.
I, I definitely were clear as you went through it and explained why we were doing what we're doing. I understand that. Um, I, it's interesting, because I've looked at a number of, um, other municipalities that do it, and occasionally they'll have a pastor from a church come in and have a moment of prayer. There's times that they don't do it at all. Uh, it's an interesting topic that I'm sure we could have hours of discussion on. Uh, I agree with Maria that I don't consider for me personally a moment of silence the same as, you know, as prayer. But I just thought it wouldn't hurt for us to, to dialogue about it, and whatever the process is, um, you know, it doesn't hurt to know where people stand with what they're thinking.
Well, we don't have a Mr. Forbes in here, but I just covering myself by thinking that this is a council meeting and therefore I'm presenting my intent to the next council meeting, um, have that presented officially.
Which I don't know is it considered a work session?
Well, we can get interpretation and if, if it's valid, then we can move forward and if it's not valid...
We'll just restate it. Reiterate, yeah, and it's on Rule 39 of the rules of council.
That's right. And just to be clear, your intention is to go back to Rule Two and reinstate it as it previously was, which, I'm, I'm not going to read the whole thing, I will just read the, the sentence, "That pledge of allegiance to the flag followed by prayer may be offered in a quorum being present council should proceed with the order of business."
Except that is that God comes before the pledge. Mrs. Lard, is that correct where I learned from the meetings that we had? So, um, the moment of, uh, the prayer itself would have to come before the pledge. God comes before country.
The other, the other thing, um, one, I'd like to know other people's opinion. The, I like the word "may" because I think it's an option, and I agree with you. I actually met a resident who, uh, had said that it happened in the past, and I was never aware of it happening in the past. Uh, now whether we want it to happen in the future is a choice that we have to make, but I do like "may" because if it happens, it, you know, good, if not, we're not breaking some kind of protocol.
I would like for all of you to consider this one, that was actually read on the decision made by Justice Kennedy, uh, in that particular, that momentous occasion, so to speak, and it is a non-denominational.
Right, but I, I personally have a problem with a written-down prayer. I feel like it should be open-ended.
I'm just giving that as an option because the Supreme Court read it loud and clear, so I figure if they can...
Melanie, what are your thoughts on that?
I think if we do, we need to say "may" have prayer and/or, or a moment of silence in case sometimes it, like, we did have a moment of silence for, um, sending...
Ever?
Yeah. So I think, I would want both to be in there, um, and then I would just, I wouldn't want one set prayer to be done every single time. I'd want it to be open so we could match the demographics of our population and not just do Christian, um, because this is non-denominational, but it's definitely Christian. So it, it just needs to be open to other religions as well and encouraged, even if it's something out of our comfort zone, just to get a better representation of our residents.
I have received several, uh, input from several citizens, emails that were sent directly to the website and to me. I was...
You got more than one email?
Mm-hmm.
From the website? Because I got one.
I got, I got someone from my stream.
So I, um, we had...
And I got a physical letter and I think you guys...
Yeah, I was going to ask, since we're talking about, I, I got the physical letter from Wendell, right? Everybody got one? Um, and I did not reply to him, which I usually would reply, and, and part of the reason I didn't reply because it was in Jack's committee or, and, um, I thought, you know, if we all respond differently, that may be fine. Um, I wanted to give Jack an opportunity to work on it with his group, but what about, and, and the one from that we got, is it yesterday? Yesterday we got it?
At least so.
From the website. There's no way to converse back to that person?
True, true.
Which I try to...
Yeah, 'cause it looked like it came through my own address, kind of thing. It, it looked that way.
No, that, that's what happens. If you, if you come through the website, it's, you know, just a...
That's Ian Corlino, you know?
Okay, so, uh, does, shouldn't this, this should come from Laws and Rules Committee to change the rules of council?
It didn't come from Laws and Rules when it was changed.
Okay.
It did not.
Okay.
It was not sent to any council, any group of the committees.
Well, no matter how we get there, I, I'm with Melanie. I think that the, um, "may" and the option of, um, having the prayer or a moment of silence provided to, like...
So, so what kind of wording are you looking at for putting in there?
I have no problem with the "may" and I have, but I just would like the word "prayer" being inserted back.
So, go back to the original language and then add something for a moment of silence also? Or not?
If that's, if that's the desire of council, that's, that's okay. And right now, it's just my brother's word to go back to...
Doesn't need to be shifted before the...
Well, I mean, if, if you're intense to introduce something, I think we need to be clear about what you're going to introduce.
I'll have it in writing for the next meeting, but I will give you a copy of that.
And I would like it to come through the Laws and Rules Committee. It can be a minority report if you can't get Jack to agree with it, but the, the committee report back to council, because I think it still needs to be discussed in your committee.
Which is coming up soon.
Friday.
Right, right.
But I just want to be clear that the change did not occur on the laws and rules.
Okay, well, that was the different, different mayor. This is the two mayor.
Are you interested in hearing how it reached now? Okay, um, shall immediately call council to order, "Pledge of allegiance to the flag followed by a moment of silence or reflection may be offered." Is your intent to keep or reflection or make that a moment of prayer and a moment or a moment of silence?
To replace the reflection for prayer. I want the word "prayer" to be present there as it was, so take, take out reflection and insert prayer.
And doesn't it need to shift before the pledge?
Yeah, it needs shift, yeah.
Yeah.
Give me any other discussion? Do you want to discuss your other...
And can I ask this to Jen, I want to be a matter of record, the check for the, uh, for hot dogs, ketchup, and our mustard for Saturday. It says, it states that on the, uh, on the memo card.
Not for me personally.
It's made, it's made for the village.
Yeah, whatever.
Jeff?
Hey to your bus, brother.
Jeff, it's made to the village up in Hills, and the memo is specifically for hot dogs, ketchup, and mustard.
Not relish.
I was going to say that.
All the oats.
Well, we're going to discuss creation. Do you believe that would do it? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have creation of the second community reinvestment area, carry it over from the five thirteen, fourteen work session, and I defer Yvonne.
Okay, and actually, um, I guess we could continue to carry this over. I have talked with, and I see that working on the housing study that's part of this, that's just something that we'll be doing over a period of time.
Is there a part of that or is that in there?
No, it's part of the... So that's where we are right now. As soon as I get that data, I'll bring it back to you to, to look at, internal parts we're going to include. Right now, my thought is to put all the rest of the village in here.
And what's the motivation to do that? Because we don't have undeveloped property in the rest of the village and we don't have, My concern is, is that, um, it, it may not spur much upgrade and develop, and maybe, well, I guess we'll just have to, to see, and, uh, obviously, the CRA has done wonders for Potville. I, I mean, we've got two more under construction. We have another one that's in the plan process, am I correct?
Correct.
And we would never have had that unless we had put that and sent it out there. Right. Well, and I think, uh, one of the benefits of some of the rest of the town would be for someone that wants to do, do an addition on their, to help keep somebody in town. But the primary thing, too, I think, would be to try to motivate MobileCom to utilize some additional land. Okay. Okay. And I think I'll deviate just slightly here, because you wanted to add something, but I was just running around here, see if Melanie has anything she'd like to talk about. Do you have anything on...
I have one small thing I want to talk about. It's not the time.
Right.
It's more of a process question. Uh, one thing, I think we had a discussion back and forth about this before, about how, when we have a topic, can we discuss it in work session? Sometimes, when does something get moved to a committee? I know that we've done that a number of times and I understand the purpose behind it, but how do we balance between having dialogue amongst ourselves on the topic that's more than, you know, a minute or so, and when something gets moved to committee? I, I really don't know how to, you know, discern between those two. What is process and how should it function?
It's a learning process.
Okay.
Uh, and I like having a work session where everybody has a chance to discuss something, bring something up, and then discuss them. So some things can be on the agenda, a person thinks of something, says that they can discuss them. Uh, and so I would like to go through and have each council member, if they have something that they'd like to have, so that then we can discuss it. If it's something then that we think should go to an ordinance or, or move further, assign it to a committee, let the committee work on it and bring it back for further discussion.
Another thing that I wanted out of this time also, uh, and Ms. Collock suggested that maybe you have Chip here, there was here some point nine, the security involved our email. I have had and seen four bogus emails, one of them caught me all night of not sleeping, waiting two hours with the IRS in Washington to find out that the number of the tax in there, that they were withdrawing announced money from my account was bogus. So I had then, after that, send it to a specific email from the IRS for investigation and then have to send it to the Attorney General for investigation. And that has happened now once, twice, and today I receive another one saying that it's an emergency phone call from US Bank, which I don't have an account there, and it's coming to me. So I think it's relevant to discuss the safety of the email that we're receiving.
Is it coming through your council?
Council, yes, council emailed to me, Ed Walter, at Green Hills Ohio Department of Work, and I received also in my mailbox, one email that I was, I thought it was Ms. Brock's, turns out to be that it was her mother's, and it was in my mailbox. So we're having some problems in here that I think bears discussing.
It was spam, but it was addressed to Kate Rowcall, and when you forwarded it to me, I'm like, and then I looked and I was like, oh, that was probably my mom's old account, but somehow it got routed to...
To me.
Maria's account, which is weird, because if it was routed anywhere, you would think it would get routed to Ken's or to Agon's.
And it's actually been canceled by now, so I...
Well, one of them said that they were throwing five thousand four hundred dollars on my account, and the other one said that it's six thousand five hundred. That was the one from yesterday. And I got one saying, "This is an emergency phone call, please click here." So I have not clicked anything and I forwarded to Ms. Brock, uh, the last two, because the other two, the Internal Revenue Services told me, sent it to the irs, fishing, at irs.org, and then, um, destroyed it. And I have the name, I have the number of the call, the number of the server, everybody who backed that up. But that was not a pleasant experience after five hours trying to solve that and one night without sleep.
Has anybody else heard? No, that's the first I've heard of it. That's terrible.
That's, that's horrible. So I do think that...
We don't, we don't know.
I do think that we need to, you know, perhaps revamp something there we have.
Well, she's, uh, she's contacted Chip, but we didn't get a reply.
I can do, go back to me.
But, you know, I get, on my email through the village, I occasionally get spam. I've never gotten anything quite like that.
This is the first council meeting.
Okay. You hear anything? Yeah!
Okay.
We're at a finance committee meeting this afternoon. We are on draft one of the budget, and, um, let me give you just a little overview, and if you would like a copy of draft one, let me know and I will have our capable municipal manager send you an electronic copy. There's going to be multiple copies. I just want to hit a couple of highlights for you. Um, right now, our revenue, we have gotten our, uh, projections from the county. The, uh, real estate is flat, so not up, not down, essentially flat, and I'm rounded to a near thousand or something, okay? Um, and this is, this is for the general fund, which is really, um, where most of the activity is. That was a welcome look. Uh, I have provided a little pushback to our manager and finance director on the, uh, revenue projection for income tax. Uh, they're showing down five percent and, uh, I'm challenging that a little bit. We'll work that out. Um, so our, our total general fund revenue is projected to be about a million six, which is down about fifty-five thousand from, from prior year. Um, there's a little thing going on where, one year we funded, and correct me if I'm speaking air here, where we funded a portion of police salaries from general fund and then, um, part of it from the, uh, special revenue fund for the police, and, um, I just asked them to go back and, can you put all the money from both funds for one year versus the, the budgeted year in one, in one, uh, place? Maybe not on the budget, but so I can see whether it's going up or down. We think we're running a little bit hot on spending money on, on part-time police officers, Avon's address and that with, um, Chief. Um, the, um, budget, the first draft, um, has no capital expenditures in it, which I think is a little problematic, especially when the police, when there's public safety things that we, that we ought to consider for, for budget. Uh, and on January first, twenty fifteen, when this new budget starts, we will be... And on January first, twenty fifteen, when this new budget starts, we will be eighteen months away from when our employees last had raises, and, um, I'd like to see some money put into the budget for some raises, um, for our people. The, um, every, our, our special revenue funds are those funds that are outside the general budget, that, um, have, um, revenue come from us, uh, from tax sources. The good news on the street construction and maintenance is there's, as we build up funds over the last few years to do the road thing, but now with matching grant, there's enough money there next year to do that. Again, these special revenue funds have to be spent for whatever the purpose that fund is, you can't take that money and send it some to another fund. Recreation, uh, that's, um, a thirty-two thousand dollar revenue fund. The police is the, the police operating fund, that's a big revenue fund, that's four hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. The fire contract, um, and the fire operating, or the fire equipment fund, um, those are fairly flat from the previous year. And we have the debt service fund, uh, we'll be working on that piece, too. So those are the, um, the various funds that we've looked at. We got our first draft today, um, the second draft, we will have ready two weeks from today for it. We need to have it to the county by July twenty-first at four p.m.
The public hearing date?
Is July eighth, and that night we have a work session and a regular scheduled session. If we pass the budget that night, we don't have any more work, if we don't pass it that night, we keep working.
We'll have to have a special meeting.
So that's, that's where we're at, right now. Anything else? Who wants it electronically right now, first draft?
You have a physical.
Okay, electronic.
Anybody else want first draft?
I have one physical, maybe.
How are you?
I know you do. Can you send one to Jack? Do you have anything else?
Um, Ms. Coback, I think you have something, and, um, something about the painting.
All right, um, yes, it's not been easy getting some bids for our huge service building, but, um, I guess the one that I like, it is a painting bid, it's in a, in a range of ten, fifteen thousand, um, dollars, it would include sandblasting to get it down to the, um, metal, and then a kind of epoxy, and then paint on top of that. Sounds a bit substantial. Another bid we had is was just painting, um, which would only last a couple of years, so this, this would be a much longer time.
Yeah, the epoxy, they only stay for two years.
And then, um, there, there'll be if in it, which could be some additional, um, they're aware of some riding wood that we have around, like, the dorm freight area, so, um, that cost includes some minimal repairs, but if they find it's expensive, there could be a little bit more of the wood areas, but hopefully not, and give a pretty thorough look.
And how reliable is that, how ready and reliable can be done?
Um, you know what, they, they have not given me a timeframe, I'll have to find out, the sand piece of equipment they use for the sandblasting apparently is the most complicated thing to line up, but if, okay, you want it, I can do that.
Where's the money coming from?
No. We have buildings, I guess.
Land's in buildings.
Um, no.
It, it wasn't a question I asked.
Right, and, you know, much of our capital simply, if we appear to have somebody that we can use, would you?
I don't, I, I still think we need to be good neighbors to that business right next door, and they've asked.
A doors.
Yeah.
Well, we don't want city forests burned, so. Okay, Maria, do you have any other thing?
No, I don't, no. I have total faith in him.
Do you have, uh, any more, Melanie? I don't have anything. Right now? So, um, new business would be going into executive session to discuss the possible sale of real estate?
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session with no action taken, and we'll be not doing anything after the executive session to discuss real estate.
Second.